Your lip. Yeah, yeah, just the. There it is, it's just something.
Yep, you're right.
Gotcha, okay. Uh, good morning, everyone. Yeah, that's the video. Uh, good morning, everyone. Seven thirty A M, uh, March twenty first, Deschutes County Legislative Meeting. For, uh, updates. So we'll start off with Commissioner updates, but we do have Doug Riggs with us and then any legislators with us, but any hot topics from let, uh, Commissioner specifically?
Um, I'd like to bring up three one six six, the ranked choice voting that the voters actually, um, it didn't pass, and I hear it's back in the legislation, so. Number three one six six ranked choice voting. I don't know if Steve, um, has an opinion on it, but anyway, just saw that.
Okay, and then Commissioner Chang, uh, just confirm when you're here with us.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that the Deschutes Water Bank Bill has been introduced formally now.
Great, okay. And then, uh, yeah, I was involved with that three five five six testimony yesterday. Uh, we did send our letter in. I also signed up for, uh, testimony. And two thirty, they just stopped. I mean, they never called me. They were done. They had to go other places, I guess. So I was that close, I think, but I would have just supported what we said in the letter. It was obviously, so this is the transient room tax discussion. It was obvious that, uh, you know, Deschutes County take kind of position of, uh, new dollars is, uh, different than AOC and LLC proper. But it supports moving the discussion along, I think, also. Uh, so with that. Uh, Doug, any updates? And say we have, uh, see Reagan Canop with us and then Representative Reshke. Uh, I want to thank everybody for joining us this morning.
Yeah, I, I would turn it over to Rep. Reshke and, and Reagan to give some updates. Move to the building. What's, what's going on over there? And with today's work session deadlines, what do you expect for the next couple of weeks? And what should we be focused on?
Great. So, good morning and thank you. Uh. So yes, it's work session deadline, posting deadline today, so there'll be. Many sighs of relief and many tears among legislators as bills don't get out of committee. Or bills get another lifeline to see if they can move forward. My, my view is typically from the revenue perspective, because that's where I spend a bulk of my time. And so what I'll be watching specifically is for.
We had you here. It looks like everybody else is moving on my screen. We'll see if he comes back here. Started off so well this morning. Okay, well, we'll get back to Representative Reshke if he's able to recap. Oh, there you go. Welcome back.
I'm sorry. Did you hear any of that?
Oh, you started off good for about the first thirty seconds and then, yeah.
Uh, yeah.
Tears and gnashing of teeth, I heard.
That's it. So the, the long and short is that, and it was a great soliloquy. So, uh, the long and short is that we have, uh. This, uh, we're, we're, I'm looking in revenue and just waiting for bills that either make it through and then come to revenue because they have a revenue impact. So. Uh, our work to date has been pretty light, uh, been mostly preparatory, but I think, uh, the heavy lifting will come here. In the second half, as we get policy bills and Senate bills come across, et cetera. Uh, to see whether we, uh, we move them forward out of revenue or not.
Right.
Revenue.
Get to see the big picture there also.
Yeah, I just wanted to say yesterday, uh, we actually got a, um, a two point five million dollar request for the Terabon Sanitation District. Um, and I know the deadline is today, so, uh, please take a look at that. It is for Terabon.
Okay.
I, I, I will say that, you know, as I. Look, look at just capital requests out of my district and then look across other districts. Whether it's drinking water or sanitation just seems to be a huge issue, and I think the Water Caucus Dashboard is up to asks of. Five point six billion dollars, which would be, uh, about. One sixth of the general fund budget, and there's no way we're going to fund all of those projects or bond all of those projects, but. We're kind of in the psych, life cycle of Oregon where things were put in. Fifty, sixty, seventy, eighty years ago, and they're all wearing out, or they've, we've extended it as far as it can go. So, uh, I think the legislature, you know, in the next. This biennium and the next few bienniums is going to have to get serious on how do we. Uh, update for the next fifty, sixty, seventy years across the entire state, because. It, it's hard to go to any community and not hear that they either have a sanitation issue, or they've got a drinking water issue.
Uh, and be the growth development pressure of central Oregon, uh, kind of in every direction, just, uh, each one of those little systems. One of the visions I have is some of those smaller crossroad towns, like we're working on Tumalo and Terabon, but even in, uh, the northern part of Clamath, you know, Gilcrest Crescent. And then just all these little crossroads towns, if we could. Put some dollars in there, then there's natural housing and a little bit of diversity in our. Yeah, I mean, uh, all kinds of opportunities there.
Good.
Thank you for joining us.
Yeah.
Uh, so yes, see Reagan Canop, good morning this morning, or, uh, Senator McLean, I think has joined us too. I'm watching the list here.
Morning, Senator. We're just doing updates, round robin updates from our legislators and, um. Getting a sense of what you think is going on in the building and what you expect in the next couple of weeks and anything you think we should be focused on.
Excuse me, good morning. I, I've been on, but, uh, with my state computer, but, uh. Uh, it didn't allow me to, uh, it, it, the video didn't work, et cetera, so. Maybe it's because I. Called myself Kevin Bacon. I don't know why. It just didn't work, but so I switched to my private, um, iPad here. And, uh, it, it worked. So I first want to log in a complaint, uh, with my technology, uh, from the state. Well, I, I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions, but I, you know, the update, I have a Capitol Construction meeting this morning and. I serve on Judiciary Committee in the Senate, along with Senator Brodmann from Central Oregon and, uh. Then, uh. Full Ways and Means, we have, uh, meeting needs going on and starting tomorrow in Gresham and then around the state. And, uh, I served with, uh. Uh, Senator Brodmann on that, and then we've got, uh, Rep. Emerson Levy and Rep. Iverson. Uh, B. Iverson also, uh, who serve on Ways and Means, so, uh, Deschutes County has. Uh, a lot of, uh, representation and then, um. I also serve on, uh, Finance and Revenue and, uh. So, uh, but I'm happy to answer any questions. I think as Warner was, uh. Uh, discussing before he blipped out and during that time at my computer somehow kept, kept listening and. I don't know. Why he talked about his favorite movies from the eighties. I, I, I don't know, but he did, but the, um, the, uh. Uh, but he did, uh, talk about the timelines in which, uh, we're it, so things are, are, uh, moving and, um. Uh, but that's normal and, uh, there's one thing about the Capitol is that nothing's really truly dead. Uh, till Sine died, uh, because there's always a way to resurrect it. And, uh. As we learn from the great cinematic piece Princess Bride, things are only mostly dead. They're not truly dead. So, um. Anyway, I'm happy to answer questions, um. About, uh, anything or continue to cite wonderful films from my upbringing.
Well, thank you for joining us. I know a lot of big topics, the transportation bill, the, um. Uh, fire maps and a lot of big, big picture items that'll end up on, uh, on the floors. You've, uh, you know, if they're not in the committees in front of you, you'll be involved with some of those. Uh, as a voting member, so thank you so much.
Yeah, um, Commissioner, I may, uh, one, one good point that Senator McLean just made is that they did announce. Uh, the, the kind of biennial road shows, Ways and Means Committee Road Shows. And, uh, there aren't going to be any in Deschutes County, but, uh, there will be one on the fourth of April at Warm Springs at the elementary school. And then one on April twenty fifth in Clamath Falls. That's about the closest that they're going to get. And those will be an opportunity for people to sign up and typically, uh, Senator, I don't know what they're planning this session, but typically they give people about a minute or two to say a few words and that's about it.
Yeah, that is true. I've been to road shows over the years and it's usually, uh. A, a lot of testimony and a lot of folks representing, uh, the public employee unions. Uh, in, in the various, uh, roles that of course, uh, are funded by the public budget, so they usually, uh, are signed up and. And so it's, it's usually pretty busy and that's mostly what we hear from. Once in a while, we, you know, there are folks. Who are organic and have, uh, things to say, uh, uh, about impacts of, of different stuff, but it's pretty packed. Um, but it is a, uh, but we usually have, uh, tours, uh, of something going on and that, and dinner. Uh, per, usually the host legislator has to provide dinner and, uh. And, uh, but, you know, I think local officials are usually, um. Uh, usually get, get a time slot, no matter how many people there are, so. I'm looking forward to see you all in the warm springs.
There we go. Thank you so much. Thanks for the invitation. Commissioner Adair.
Uh, yes, uh, Senator McLean, I do have a question. Uh, what about that eight hundred million, excuse me, eight hundred million dollar ask for the waterfront ballpark in Portland? Is, is that going to have life? Because we have so many senators that are all around Portland.
Yeah, it does have life, and I think the, uh, they've made a pretty compelling argument for, um, they've lobbied me, uh, specifically for it, I guess. All the members of Capitol Construction, I think, so, um. It's a bonding, a measure. There's already was passed a measure to, um. Allow some, uh, i- if a ball came, this would be raising that amount, but, um. It, it would be accessing and then the debt service of that would be based upon. Uh, I think if you look at the average major league baseball salaries, um, together with the, uh, visiting team, they play three. Uh, you know, so, uh, just for example, uh, if you have a ball player who makes a hundred thousand dollar per major league game. And he visits, uh, Portland for a three game stand, that ball player just made three hundred thousand in the state Oregon, so he's taxed. Then you got the home team and et cetera. And so when they looked at the tax revenues and the, uh, uh, state income tax. And, you know, they, they basically show debt service of the, um, of the, uh. Uh, of the eight hundred, uh. Million dollar bond and so, um, you know, to be frank, it's, uh, they made a pretty good argument. Um, of why we should support it and how it would improve, uh, the, uh, city and, uh. And I don't think it's Portland only, to be frank. I think there's a lot of folks from Deschutes County that would enjoy, uh, a family outing and go see a ballgame in Portland. So, um, I, I mean, if unless things change, I mean, I'm inclined to support it.
Thank you very much. So this is our, uh, yeah, legislative, uh, update meeting. Thank you very much for joining us. Uh, I see, is it saying, uh, Reagan Canop? Has joined us.
Hello, Commissioners and.
You're ready at the bottom of the hour, I saw.
Yes, I appreciate the opportunity to be here. My name is Reagan Canop. I am the Chief of Staff for Representative, uh, Breez Iverson. And, um, she asked me to attend today and just give some quick updates. Uh, Commissioner Adair, I had actually been watching that House Bill three one, um, six six. And I had, uh, maybe pointed out to some folks that voters had rejected ranked choice voting by a pretty wide margin, and that is not in the dash one amendment that they are working off of. Um, I can't speak to why it's in the original bill, but it looks like they're moving away from that. So that's, uh, that is, um, the direction that I'm seeing there. That bill deals more with, uh, switching us to an open primary, uh, process. I don't know what the viability of that this session is, but it is in the House Rules Committee. Um, so it'll be interesting to see if that pops out. Um, additionally, in terms of priorities for Representative Breez Iverson, uh, we're hoping for some late good news, but we have two bills, I think, that might be. Of interest and they're sort of, um, packaged together. House Bill thirty eight forty six, um. Would allow the State Forestry Department to enter into an agreement with the federal government to manage the Ochico Forest, and we view that as a, as a pilot project. And the pilot project is what if the feds gave us control of our forest back? And there's been iterations of resolutions introduced. We have one of those, HGM fourteen. We're also trying to get a public hearing and maybe a work session on that. But the goal is to start the conversation because you've heard from the federal government. That they want to do less, and so we want to see if there's an opportunity for the state to get control and benefit of these lands. Um, and so we're hoping to have that conversation. Thirty eight forty six is in, uh, Chair Live Lee's Climate Committee. And then HGM fourteen is in the House Ag and Everything Committee, as it is called inside the building, because it has a very long name. So we are, um, looking forward to, um, hopefully having some public hearings and work sessions on those. So by the end of today, we'll know, um, if those conversations are happening. Um, but we think, uh, that this is a great opportunity to have a bipartisan conversation about, um, potentially regaining control of our forests. So we've got a couple ideas out there. And are, uh, very excited to make an attempt and a run at having those conversations.
Uh, point of clarity. So can we back up? Uh, so there's a bill and what's HGM stand for?
It is a House Joint Memorial, so, um, uh, because of our federalism system, we can't tell the federal government what to do. However, we can send them. Uh, basically a resolution saying, uh, we would like them to do something. And so we do that in the legislature in the form of a, a joint memorial, memorializing the opinion of the legislature at one particular time.
Great, thank you. And then the bill. So they're both the same topic. One's a message to the feds saying this is what we're talking about, and then the other one's a bill.
Yes, and, and, uh, one is about all of our lands. It's all of our federal forests and all of our BLM land. Um, and again, it's not that we assume that they're going to return all the lands to us tomorrow. But let's start the conversation and the goal is to build bipartisan consensus. And so if the language, you know, needs to change to build some bipartisan, bipartisan consensus, we're open to that. Um, but really we want to see if the whole West can speak with one voice, because this isn't a problem in the Midwest and in the East. They don't have. Massive amounts of federal land, but fifty-three percent of Oregon's land is controlled by the federal government. We're not even control. Of our entire state. We, the state doesn't even control, uh, more than half of our land. And so having a conversation with the federal government. About what can we do better, uh, a- and what can they do better? And then having those conversations and, and maybe getting. Even if we don't get the land back, if we were to be able to manage it for a period of time and show that we can manage it better here in the state of Oregon. Uh, a lot of our major, uh, wildfire issues. Start on federal land, and so, um, there's obviously something lacking in the management, and if they're scaling down headcount, they're scaling down services. How could we upscale in order to, um, receive a benefit for Oregonians, continue to protect, um, forest land, uh, but also get revenue? Off of the land that can go to rural schools and things of that nature. So it's a big conversation. Um, we don't know that we can resolve, uh, all the issues, but I think it's a great year, a great session to have that conversation. And maybe create some bipartisan consensus, and so that's what we're trying to do.
Great, thank you. I see Jen as her hand.
Yeah, I just wanted to get the number of the HGM. I got the bill, but I didn't get the HGM number.
And it's HJM fourteen, and then there's also one other resolution sort of in this vein. HJM eleven, which sort of asks the federal government to look at their wildfire practices and, um, maybe improve them a bit so that we have less fires here in Oregon.
Thank you.
No problem. Thank you, Jen.
Thank you. Uh, anything else?
Uh, we're very excited. We're going to make some progress, uh, we believe on, on Juniper, which I talked to you guys about, uh, last time I was here. Uh, so that's very exciting. Uh, we're working on it, an amendment, uh, to get that down in Ways and Means and so that we can, we can fight for that priority. And then, um, something else that we're working on, uh, is EMS modernization. So, uh, we were very, um, excited. We introduced a, a study bill that studied a small aspect. Of EMS because, um, there's a lot of rural fire districts, including Jefferson County and others. Who are really struggling with being able to provide EMS services, um, because ninety percent of those, those fire districts that do that, they're rural fire districts. Ninety percent of their calls are not fire calls. They are, um, emergency, uh, calls. And we heard from Representative Graber, who's the lead Democrat on this EMS modernization legislation, that's House Bill thirty five seventy two. Um, that, uh, CMS, so federal reimbursement for like Medicare and Medicaid, so you have your low income and, and your, and your, uh, seniors. They can reimburse as little as twenty-five percent of an ambulance call or an ambulance ride. And so that becomes very challenging if, uh, they can't fill the gap on the other side of that, fill that other seventy-five percent. Of those rides, and those are some of the highest needs users. Um, and so through no fault of their own, they're sort of bankrupting local fire districts because they only have one source of revenue typically. Um, if you're a rural fire district, you only have your property tax revenue. Some are able to pass operating lev- levis, but that really only delays the inevitable. You wouldn't be able to afford to sell ninety percent. Of what you're doing in your business, uh, at a seventy-five percent loss for very long. And so the math really no longer works. They can no longer subsidize. With the fireside of those revenues, so they're reducing headcount and they're reducing services, um, as many as twenty-five percent. Of our, of our rural fire districts, um, are at risk of not being able to provide EMS services at all. And so this, it's really a ten-year modernization plan, but there's some stopgap stuff in this omnibus bill. So we're joining forces with Representative Graber to help pass House Bill thirty five seventy two, um, and begin modernizing our EMS systems, modernize, um, recruiting and workforce. And then also modernize how we pay for it. Um, and so we think through some of those improvements, we'll be able to help our, uh, rural fire districts continue to be healthy. Uh, it's, it's a core function of government. We can't, we can't not fight, we can't not have the fire districts about the fires. We also can't, uh, we can't afford not to provide, uh, ambulance service. In urban settings, in suburban settings, in rural settings, because, uh, so many of us, uh, we want to call nine one one and we want, either for us or our loved ones, we want somebody to be on the other end to pick up. And, and right now we're headed down a direction where in a lot of rural communities, there isn't going to be, uh, an ambulance at the other end of that. At the other end of that phone call, and that's, that's a huge problem, um, for everybody, but especially for rural, rural seniors, uh, I think especially.
Yeah, so that fits our scenario, uh, Southern Deschutes County, La Pine Fire, uh, ninety square miles and, uh, yeah, every run costs money. Uh, I, one of the things that comes to mind is the Fire Med, kind of statewide nonprofit, uh. Fifteen, ten, fifteen years ago, people writing a fifty dollar check to be Fire Med members, real proud to put a sticker on your front door knowing you're helping the system, even if you're not making a nine one one call that year. Uh, but I don't know the value of that anymore, so I don't know if that's come up recently, but. Used to be the, the thing that was promoted, you know, we know we're going to have a hard time making ends meet, but be a Fire Med member to help the system. Uh, is that.
Uh, that's not something that I'm familiar with, uh, but that might be due to my age, unfortunately. So, uh, that's something we should look into, um. Uh, you know, just understanding that is new again, yeah.
Yeah, maybe, exactly. Maybe it could be new again. There you go. Um. Okay, anybody else joining us? Any other thoughts, Doug?
We have Senator Alinta come on and Representative Krop on too.
Oh, wonderful. Okay, I'm not seeing the list. So this is our half hour before our eight o'clock meeting. It's seven fifty-five now. There's no reason we can't, uh, keep this going. Very valuable to have our legislators joining us, so.
Sure, I'll jump in, Tony.
Good morning.
Um, since, since you're doing all the, the central and southern legislators, so, um, you know, again, as I said last month, um, I think I jumped in also at the end. Somehow I'm, I'm, uh. Uh, it's a little bit of a challenge for my Zoom system, but, uh, got it worked out. So, listening to, uh, Senator McLean and Rep. Reshke, as well as, uh. Vicky, um, Reagan's commentary, so I, you know, all of that stuff is going on. Those are great reports. Um. I, the committees I'm on are healthcare, early childhood and hu- behavioral health and human services. So those are not, you know. Dealing with the natural resources, although obviously. I see those, um, issues and, and hear about the bills and things and, and support those, those that are, uh, going to be beneficial, so. And, uh, appreciate the work that the legislators are doing on that. Um. You, you know, yesterday, so just, uh, yesterday, we, um, we fought a good fight, uh, regarding, um. SB nine sixteen, which was paying, uh, union workers, um. While they're on strike, so, uh, it's a, it's a great incentive to strike bill. Um, but anyway, that, that did fail. It did pass, um, the Senate, so it's going to make its way over. Over to the House, um, so, um, that's, uh, not a bill we were, uh. Greatly opposed to and, uh, the session, we, we had a whole lot of, of bills to, um, get through that yesterday morning, and we only got through that one because there was so much conversation, which was good conversation. Um, and it's good to have that, um, but it did, it did get passed through, so, um, that's, I think that's going to be, over time, going to be real difficult on the unemployment system. And, you know, we hear from constituents now that struggle with the unemployment system as it is, let alone, um, doing this kind of thing. So. We'll see how that plays out, um, in the years to come, seeing, seeing what happens over on the House side. Um, I enjoyed, uh, Doug had, had the cocoa event there at the Capitol, so, so we went to dinner, um. With the folks that were there, which was nice. The La Pine Mayor got to meet her, which was great, and, uh, most of the other folks were from Redmond. Which is not my district, but, uh, you know, we all have the same issues for the most part. Had good conversations about water, water storage, um, all the things that. That we know should happen and we will, um, keep that conversation going and, and keep working towards that. So. Other than that, you know, the, the next week we'll know what's going to go and, and, uh. Wh- what we, what we need to have on our radar and, and, uh. And, uh, keep attention to, so we're looking forward to having the bill, the bill piles narrowed down a little bit, so. Anyway, thanks for, thanks for doing this. Appreciate the conversation and, uh, I'll sign off.
Great, thank you very much for joining us. Uh, I'll be in the building next Friday, so I'll make my way around to see who I can say hi to, uh, with that, Representative Krop.
Yeah, good morning. I literally have committee in two minutes, um, but nice to everybody. Um. You know, this is bill posting deadline, so I'm still working through that for Judiciary Committee, uh, you know, um. We had in the Joint Committee on Addiction and Behavior, we talked a little bit about the OAC funding, um. And that is a probably an ongoing conversation. We're going to have probably more forward looking if I'm, um, but we're going to have a conversation about, I see Holly nodding her head about what that funding looks like. Yeah, we are just in the process of sort of narrowing down some of the bills, uh, in the public safety space, also still looking at what the allocation looks like for. Deflection programs. I'm working on a bill to sort of streamline, uh, the public safety dollars that we give from CJC to our counties. Uh, making that a sort of singular grant instead of a, um. Five or six grant, we get JRI grants, deflection grants, specialty courts grants, impacts grants, so trying to make that a more streamlined process. But also pushing counties to have holistic public safety plans. Um, how do your drug courts fit in with your downward departure prob- population, fit in with your, um. Uh, deflection programs with such, that we'll probably be having a hearing on, on that concept in a couple of weeks. Um. So I apologize, I do have to be downstairs at eight o'clock.
Well, that's very valuable to explain that whole concept, at least to us this morning. So thank you so much for joining us.
Great, nice to everybody.
Okay, well, as I say, this is our monthly attempt, just having a little bit of FaceTime with our, uh, legislators. As I say, we're also in the building a little bit. Uh, and we'll have that, uh, Ways and Means tour around the state here pretty soon. Anything else? Yeah, Doug, please.
Yeah, just before we, we kick off the discussion on, on the bill list, uh, thanks to all of our legislators. It came a great turnout and super helpful to hear the insight, and Reagan, thanks for coming as well. Uh, appreciate that. Um, I do want to point out, um, a couple of big things happened in the building, uh, the big debate on the Senate floor yesterday on Senate Bill nine one six, um. And then another big thing that happened was the Ways and Means co-chairs, uh, released their budget frame. And then another big thing that happened was the Ways and Means co-chairs released their budget framework. The, the press conference they held and the information they released still show Oregon heading in a higher revenue direction. So that allows them to put aside money in this kind of framework of what might be the budget at the end of the session for important priorities. They did not fund some of the big ticket items in the governor's budget, for instance, the eight hundred million dollars in her housing request. So that is still something that they would have to come back to and add to the budget. But this all hinges on the revenue forecast in May. So in early May, they'll come out with the final revenue forecast and that'll be the basis upon which they will decide to allocate funding. Of course, the, the eight hundred pound gorilla in this whole discussion is what is the impact of the federal budget decisions on the state? And we may not know that by the end of the session. So a variety of folks are predicting, and it was kind of confirmed in, in, in the Ways and Means framework, that they might set aside money into a savings account or a special purpose appropriations or a SPA account, which the E-Board could allocate at a later point in time. Not saying that's a good or a bad idea, but that might reduce the amount of discretionary spending that they would have to spend on, on key projects. So that's a wait and see type of thing. We won't really know until we get towards the middle of the end of May. And of course, we won't see the details until the very final days of the session. But those are two big things that are happening. But you can expect a lot of hearings, a lot of work sessions in the next three weeks. The deadline for those bills to get out of the House committees, we're out of the Senate committees at April ninth. So that's coming up in a few weeks. And then Jen, turn it over to you.
Turn back to the commissioner.
Acknowledge, top of the hour, we're kind of transitioning from that first half hour to our regular weekly meeting, eight o'clock Fridays for legislative updates, going through a bill list. So to you, Jen.
Great. So coming out of our, our discussion, the first half an hour, there are several bills that I'll add on for next meeting, next week's meeting, including Commissioner Dare, the three-one-six-six. I don't think we have Steve Dennison on today to talk about that. So we'll, I'll flag that for the report next week, as well as some of the bills that were mentioned during the legislature's updates. So we'll, we'll get to those next week. Today, we're going to start on page five. We have several bills that we're going to address that, that are going to be combined, discussed between Peter Gatauski and Kevin Moriarty. The first one coming up is HB three-one-seven-two, which directs the Department of the State Fire Marshal to establish a grant program to facilitate the retrofitting of dwellings and accessory structures to reduce vulnerability to wildfire.
Yeah, thanks, Jen. Yet commissioners, this, this bill, as Jen just summarized, caught, caught our attention. And obviously, it's, it's reminiscent of the, of, of bills that have provided or proposing to provide funding to assist residents. It makes me think of the, the recent bill that provides funding through, I think, Oregon State University to help residents with deepening their domestic wells and onsite wastewater system improvements. So I went, we, I went ahead and elevated it to a priority one and it seemed, seemed fairly straightforward to support it. The other provision of the bill, it also acknowledges if there were any structures that were lost to a fire, dwellings lost to a fire and they were going through the rebuilding process, HB thirty-one seventy-two would, would provide or could provide some resources to help fire hardening in the event of a, a rebuilt situation.
So we haven't taken a position on this one yet. A new bill for us. Commissioner Chang.
Well, you know, you all know that I think that cost share and incentives to help people make their homes more resilient are great. My key question with this is what's the pay for? Or how are, you know, how is the legislature envisioning covering this? Because we, we know there's a whole bunch of similar programs originally authorized under how, under Senate Bill seven sixty-two in twenty twenty-one, which last session basically were not funded at all. So we can set up authorities for great programs, but if there's no money, then there's really not that much point. And I'm wondering, Doug had his hand up. I'm wondering if he has any insights on how this would be funded or whether this might be tied to the wildfire funding package that's being kicked around now, right now.
Mute. Yeah, there you go.
Yep, I was looking for my button. Yeah, this, a good, very good question. There's an indeterminate fiscal in the bill. The line for the amount of money that would be available is blank. So what they've done is they've set up a, a shell of a program that could be funded by Ways and Means, depending on how much money Ways and Means decides to allocate to this or other related bills. The bill passed out of the, out of the committee yesterday, I think ten to, ten to nothing or ten to two, like it might have been a couple of no votes. And now it's the Ways and Means where it will probably be put into that, you know, holding pattern until the wildfire bills, including Senate Bill eighty-three, which I think is going to be the vehicle for the wildfire maps bill. That's what Senator Golden has indicated to me. So thi- this will be one of a number of bills, Commissioner, that will be kind of addressed in a uniform way as far as the funding issue goes, once it gets to Ways and Means.
Well, yeah, so Commissioner Chang's comments, you know, that's, if the legislature wants to do it, I would support it, but obviously, yeah, how does it get funded and what's the big picture? Kevin Moriarty.
Yeah, again, along with Peter, I also, you know, reviewed this bill. You know, I, I guess internally I do support it, but as Commissioner Chang addressed, you know, I am concerned with where the funding would come from. Especially in relationship to Senate Bill eighty-five, which is also being proposed for defensible space. You know, and then also something to consider is on the retrofitting, if, if something like replacing fence gates or, you know, could be included as well. That's a significant issue we've identified in, in Bend. And, you know, I didn't, when, when I think of this, like, how, how many houses could we, you know, logistically retrofit in Central Oregon per year? You know, it might be a very small number. You know, and it might not really attribute to reducing fire risks. So just need a little more information, I think, before I fully support the bill.
Well, so how about, I'm proposing that we support and we don't make it a priority one, because there's just variables all around this. Let's see, Commissioner Chang, but not a yes. Commissioner Dare.
I really appreciate Peter bringing this to our attention. Actually, I'm, I'm happy to leave a one on it.
Well, let's go with the two, as I say, two of us going there just to move on. But yeah, we support it. As I say, it's a, where's the checkbook going to come from? Next, is there anything else on that one?
Print money. Don't you know that?
Oh, well, somebody's going to print money, I know. And paper money comes from trees too. So there's, there you go.
Junipers, juniper trees, run a lot of money. Okay, so I'll, I'll mark that as a support, a two support for now. Next up, we have HB three-nine-four-four, but what we have here is actually a trio of three bills that were brought to Peter's attention. And this again is going to be a joint discussion with Kevin Moriarty and Peter. We have HB three-nine-four-four, we have SB eight-three with the dash four amendment. That's located on page six. I apologize, it's the way the Bill Track Report comes out. I can't group them together. And then we also have SB six-seven-eight dash four, which is on page seventeen. These all three talk about repealing the state wildfire maps. It did sound like Doug mentioned, Doug, I think it was Doug who mentioned that potentially SB eighty-three is going to be where the wildfire packet comes out of. So I'll, I'll punt it over to Doug real quick to see, do we need to talk about all three of these? Or is there one in particular? Or, okay, I.
Only, only Senate Bill eighty-three is going to be moving. That'll be the, the base bill. That's the bill that they are preparing an amendment for, that Senator Golden has been working with his colleagues on. And six, I, I could be wrong, but I don't think the other two bills are going to move.
Well, that's interesting. So it was a vehicle that was there pre-session filed that says, but with the content, and I don't know what, I haven't studied deeply the content, but three-nine-four-four, a lot of people signed on to that also. So there's engagement from, yeah, yeah, both sides of the aisle, I hope here, I'm not.
Yeah, three-four-four-four and six-seventy-eight are, are mainly the Republican vehicles against the wildfire maps. And there's a dash four amendment to six-seventy-eight that, that modifies and narrows a little bit. Again, I, I believe that the bill that Senate leadership has picked as the vehicle is going to be Senate Bill eighty-three.
So, and we'll need to stand by to understand the content of the amendments as it evolves.
Correct. Yeah, the amendment is not, has not been released yet, at least not that I've seen.
It's in that, there's actually a link, the dash four amendment, there's a link to it in the email, the updated version to Bill Tracker email. You can click on that link and it will take you. Sorry, that's for the.
And that's six-seventy-eight.
Six-seventy-eight, yes, sorry.
Kevin Moriarty, he's probably way up on this. Is, but, but to study the content though, seriously, Kevin, is there, where do you know that we're at? As in, is it a future amendment or are we starting to see something on paper?
I, you know, I don't have any more information than Doug presented. You know, we, we were, we received these bills this week. And, you know, it sounds like eighty-three, maybe, is that, Doug, is that the, would that be proposed by Senator Golden? The Senate Bill eighty-three, is that why it might be moving forward versus the other two? Okay, so that seems like the reason.
He's the chair of the committee and he's the majority party and that typically is the, the vehicle that the bills take.
Just to jump in, the, the link that Jen pointed out does have a link to the dash four amendment to Senate Bill eighty-three. A quick recap.
Sorry, before you get, sorry, I just dropped it in the chat so everyone can reference it if they need to.
I, I don't, commissioners, if you want, we can, I can spend thirty, forty-five seconds running through what, what the dash four amendment does. You may already be aware of it. I want to be mindful of your time and all the other bills that need to be reviewed today. But it's a major, major modification to the wildfire program, making basically defensible space, fire hardening, the identification of a wooey far more permissive for local governments, narrowly constructed. So I, I, Chairman Debone, I, I turn it over to you. Again, I want to be sensitive to the time. And I think the three commissioners maybe are likely well aware of the type of reform that's being contemplated with, as Doug noted, it looks like Senate Bill eighty-three is going to be the vehicle for changes to wildfire prevention, mitigation, education and incentives.
Well, so probably the best thing we could do is just understand kind of the arc of how this will happen. Cause you know, as I say, the amendments may change. There's inputs from all kinds of areas here right now. And then our fallback has been to discuss this at a board meeting. Next week, we're not having a board meeting, just lack of agenda items from Monday and Wednesday. So the next time we'll be meeting is the, the Monday following. I'm just trying to put it in perspective for what, what we think as a board, what we could get done here.
So, yeah. I, I'd just like to say that this, this concept of delegating decisions about defensible space and home hardening requirements to local governments, in my mind, is better than completely abandoning them. We need to, we need requirements around defensible space and home hardening so that we can get more done, so that more people's houses don't burn to the ground in the next wildfire. And so that people who haven't done the work, don't put their neighbors in jeopardy. And I, I know that the City of Sisters is planning to, you know, implement requirements even in large areas of the City of Sisters that were identified as moderate hazard by the state map. So to respect and honor their wishes, to take wildfire risk reduction seriously. I, I would, I would propose that we support this, you know, this policy approach to delegating the, the decisions about defensible space and home hardening requirements to local governments.
So clarify that for me. Are you referring to specific amendments to Senate Bill eighty-three or input to a future amendment? I mean, I understand the concept you're saying, but what?
Basically, right now, with Senate Bill seven sixty-two, the state has created requirements for defensible space and home hardening in high hazard areas and wildland urban interface areas. We are talking about abandoning the maps that would be used to determine where those requirements apply and don't apply. Looks like the legislature is going to do that. So basically, then we would have no requirements for dispensable, defensible space and home hardening. That was the whole intention behind those provisions in Senate Bill seven sixty-two. So what, what Senator Golden is, is suggesting here is giving local governments the option of adopting defensible space and home hardening requirements at the local level. And I know that the City of Sisters is already interested in doing this. And, you know, based on the, the recent moves by the City of Bend, you know, the way the, the, the strongly worded letter that I just received at my house, it seems like the, the City of Bend is interested in that as well. So to, to honor the wishes of our local, you know, our, our fellow local governments, I, I would suggest that we support this approach.
Is that in the bill though, is my point?
It's in the attachment that I just sent. It looks like it's on page four of the attachment. It's section, section two point three is where it starts talking about that.
Commissioner Debone, it, it basically reestablishes R three twenty-seven as it was structured before the wildfire hazard mapping legislation was put in effect. So as Commissioner Chang noted, is Kevin and I understand it is that it, it allows local governments discretion to, to identify areas for fire hardening, as well as they've also narrowed the definition of the wildland urban interface. So it, it, again, none of this is mandatory. There's also a mechanism there for, for emphasizing where the Oregon Department of Forestry should be doing fuel reduction and thinning in this refined wooey definition.
As I say, so maybe I'm, maybe I didn't read the same memo or something. That's all I'm trying to get clear. As in, are we settling in it on a dash four amendment for Senate Bill eighty-three? Or is there going to be future amendments that we're talking about, ideas that need to be added to it? That's all I was trying to get clear here just now.
Commissioner, the dash four is a week and a half old. It was not posted to Olus. It is not the vehicle that Senator Golden will be proposing next week. I think elements will be the same because what the dash four did was take the bill, the previous bills written and then make modifications to it. So you notice that the, the amendment is thirty-five pages long and much of the amendment is just a repeat of the, the previous language. So I, I don't know what changes might be in a dash five or six, but I, I don't know that we can take a look at the dash four and make decisions based on the dash four, because Senator Golden has told me that there are going to be extensive modifications to that amendment. And we won't see it until he, he determines it ready for primetime.
So as I say, I'm just trying to think through the arc of, of are we taking positions? Are we excited about this? Or is this something pretty controversial? So, so priority, priority one, no position. And we do have a meeting next Friday morning on legislative update. So as the week evolves, if we can get an email and says, study this, because this is the latest, next Friday morning, maybe we can have our substantive discussion. That's really, that's where I was going with this. Where are we going to make decisions on how excited we are?
So they put it to the commissioners, potentially, we could do SB eighty-three as a priority one, no position and drop HB three-nine-four-four and SB six-seven-eight to a three watch. So if they happen to get legs, staff will be notified and we can elevate them back up. But it sounds like SB eighty-three is, is the vehicle right now. So we could keep that on the report. Is, so yeah, I'll put that as a, as a, as a question for the commissioners if that's the path we want to take on those.
That's the proposal. So priority one, no position. As I say, and I, and I'm thinking through next Friday, so we'll, it is a, we don't have other regular board meetings, but next Friday, we can have a follow-up meeting on this. Commissioner Dare.
Yes, I did hear from Senator Bonham this morning, early, early, and he did say eighty-three. But honestly, I, I would like to keep those other two bills if there's something in them that really we feel like it needs to be an eighty-three, we should push for that. And, you know, trying to get people for water money, well money, this last year, it was income up to sixty thousand for two people or you couldn't get any money. And I'm like, if you're going to actually help people, I said, can't you do it proportionally, like up to a hundred and twenty thousand? So that, you know, so somebody that has to do a new well. So if they're talking about. So that, you know, so somebody that has to do a new well, so if they're talking about money again. Make it so that it actually helps people that need the help. And I, um, you know, like there's a really, there's a great wood house in the middle of sisters and I wonder what they're going to do with that house because. You know, it just looks like it might explode, but it always has beautiful flowers.
Well, spray with that, that stuff you're set for the fences.
Oh, oh, yeah, I'll have to drop them off that information. Thank you.
Okay, there we go. Okay, well, so yeah, Senate Bill eighty three, priority one. More to come. Does that sound like the place to be right now? Making sure.
It looks like Commissioner Chang is shaking and said, yes, I'll, I'll do that. So I'll drop the other two to three. Staff will get notifications.
They'll pop right up if there's action.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll, I'll, I'll be weighing in individually on this dashboard amendment. In between now and next week, but if you don't want to, uh, take any positions, that's fine.
Okay, well, because it's going to be evolving is my thought. But yeah, yeah, you're, you go engage, this is your domain.
And that's why, that's why we want to weigh in now is to. Help to guide the evolution of, of the bill and support the directions that we are interested in as opposed to passively sitting by and watching.
Understood.
I didn't say to passively sit by, I said, let's look at those other two bills and see if there's something in them that really. Hopefully we could transfer over to the golden rule.
Yeah, so to not passively stand by means writing a letter saying we'd like to see this in the bill.
Exactly.
These, these three bills talk about the same things. We're talking about, we're focusing in on requirements for defensible space and home hardening. Couple of these bills want to just eliminate requirements and this other bill in this dash four amendment are talking about. Giving local governments an opt in. Uh, scenario, um, in, in which they could implement. Defensible space and home hardening requirements. So they are, they're talking about the same thing where they're taking very different approaches.
Okay, well, good discussion. Uh, this is the topic of the day. We'll, we'll work through getting there.
Okay, next up we have SB six, I'm going to turn this over to Peter.
Yeah, thanks, thanks Jen. Uh, Senate Bill six, uh, obligates the community development department to. Strongly recommend opposition. It would require. Uh, the building division or essentially the department to approve, uh, a building permit that is complete. Within forty five days, if, if the forty five day mark isn't met. We're obligated to, we're liable for fees and the cost of actually preparing the application. This creates an adversarial relationship with applicants with the department. There are instances, commissioners, where. Building permits, uh, building plans require review with onsite wastewater, making sure that. Uh, land use conditions of approval have been met. Not to mention, uh, just coordination with, with, uh, the plans themselves from a plans, uh, a plan review standpoint, so. This is, uh, very significant and again, it changes the tenor. We're a very collaborative. Department, as you know, we have strong relationships with the building association in central Oregon. But given the, the penalties that, that are structured as I've summarized. It changes that collaborative relationship to be adversarial and there have been times, as the commissioner knows. Specifically last spring and summer where we didn't have enough permit technicians due to layoffs and hirings. And we had choke points where we, even on intake, it took us a while to. To review those applications and then route them to their subject matter experts. So. For those reasons, uh, CDD strongly recommends opposition.
So what, uh, as I digest, well, so Doug. Is it on this topic?
Yeah, um, just so you know, there is testimony in the record, uh, just as for your information with the city of Bend opposing the bill. Uh, AOC and, uh, LOC have both taken a position against this bill as well as. The other bill that's kind of related, which is Senate Bill, um, nine seventy four, which I think is also on the list for us to discuss. And it's, it's a matter, the discussion is centered around the ticking clock. And, um, and the fact that in both this case and the other case, that if you have a deadline. Uh, today, there's a little flexibility to say, oh, oh, all the documents weren't quite correct. You have a few extra days to modify them. Uh, both of these proposals. Put cities and counties in a position where essentially at, at the expiration of that clock, you have to deny the application. And then the application has to go back to the starting point. So it might have the unintended consequence of actually delaying. The land use action on this and that is really where the, the discussion is focused. On both this bill and the other bill, but there is city event testimony. On Senate Bill six in the record, if you want to take a look.
Great, thank you so much. So, uh, I would stay pretty neutral on this. I just think of, uh, you know, uh. Yes, there's layers, there's decisions, there's analysis that can be done on all these things, but. If the will of the people was to say, hey, I want to build this, you know, something on my private property and we don't need. All this analysis and overhead. So as I say, I, I could go. Purely, uh, philosophical on this too and not. Not get excited about opposing it, just, just sharing. Commissioner Derek, Commissioner Chang.
Yeah, I, I, I think if, um, stakeholders in our community are interested in. Uh, reviews of, uh, applications going faster, they should be interested in helping us build our capacity. To complete those reviews as quickly as possible. We, we have gotten good grades basically from. You know, the builders association and others, uh, other organizations in our community. Uh, and, uh, they understand that, you know, when, uh. We take this responsibility very seriously and when we have the capacity to do the work. Uh, we get it done quickly. Uh, I can understand that, uh, there's concerns about other. Local government entities in our region, uh, having slow permit review processes, but. Uh, it, it's not, uh, you know, I don't feel like. Our local stakeholders have these concerns about Deschutes County and I don't think that, uh, this. One size fits all, uh, approach that just declares what appropriate timelines are. To complete this work is a, is a, a, a good fit for us. So I, I'd, I'd like to oppose this in the same way that AOC has opposed it.
Commissioner Derek.
I would actually, because I've built a couple of houses and I know how much fun it is. Um, I would say ninety days would really be made a lot more appropriate. That's three months. And if people could know that their funding, you know, their permitting would be done in ninety days, I think that would be, um. That would save a lot of funding, long term, you know, the cost carrying money, et cetera. So. You know, forty five is too short, but I would, you know, if he would do this with ninety, I think that could be really, um. Advantageous for people that are out there in, in the construction project process.
So how about, uh, is, I mean, is this something we really want to get involved in? I'm just thinking maybe we take a, a three oppose or something and just let it not be in our. Discussion per se.
Doug, do you have a sense of whether this is got legs or not?
Yeah, Commissioner, that's a really good question. Um, I've been in a couple of meetings on housing issues. With Senator Anderson and he is very committed to this. Con, these two concepts, both these concepts, which are both related, um, I, um, that. He's a vice chair of the Senate Housing Committee and he's got a good relationship with the chair. Um, so I think it's possible that, that. One or, one or more will move. I know there are negotiations. I know that Mallory Roberts from AOC has been, uh, extensively involved. There was an issue regarding whether or not the bill would add surveyors, uh, surveying. Uh, procedures to the clock. That's been hotly contested and, and debated. I think that's going to be left out or taken out. But I, um, it, I, I don't know yet if it's going to be, if it's going to have legs. Sorry, I, I can't be more definitive.
Um, yeah, another question, uh, do you know how active, you know, I, I, I mean. It sounds like, you know, I, I know that AOC is opposed. Uh, do you have a sense of how active they are on in kind of fighting this bill?
I think they have been actively engaged in opposing the current version of the bill along with LOC. Um, but I, I. That doesn't always carry the day in, in the building. Hope that's helpful.
Well, I did, I mean, for me, it, it. Uh, if we want, uh, if we don't want to use the resources of Deschutes County. To actively oppose this bill as written, then. Um, it gives me some comfort to know that AOC is actively working on it.
Commissioner Derek. Three opposed?
Yes, I, I'd send ninety days. I would, I would like a ninety day amendment.
And if it gets, if this gets legs or whatever, then we can discuss it in the next couple of weeks.
Sounds good.
Okay, there we go. Taking something off the list, yeah.
Okay, um, next up I had to talk about was, um, it's under district attorney first, um, but also finance, but was just an update on. The three, five, five, six. I know Commissioner Devon. Gave an update at the beginning of the seven thirty call, so I don't know if there's any, any more updates to provide there. Um, the city of Bend also submitted a letter of written testimony, which has been circulated to the commissioners. I think the big ask here is that, um. Most of the testimony that I heard yesterday that was in support of three, five, five, six. Was really asking them to advance the legislation to the House Committee of Revenue.
And I had that statement right in my testimony and I didn't get to say anything. Uh, Doug.
Yeah, I, I'd echo what Jen just said, which is that the cities and the counties have, have agreed that the best. Venue for discussing tax policy is actually in the. Committee that deals with tax policy, which is the revenue committee. Uh, it was a little head scratching that the bill. Went to the other committee in the first place and none of us could quite figure that out. Um, but there was quite a bit of discussion and, um, I, I do think that the, uh, the letter that you guys. Uh, submitted to the record adds an important element for discussion. Uh, in the debate and I'm hoping it does get passed out and sent to revenue. Just as a reminder, the revenue committee is one of those committees that has slightly different deadlines and can continue to take a look at bills. Past the end of the April ninth bill deadline, so they, they would have a little more time for. A work group or discussion or debate on the issue heading towards the end of the session.
So, and my testimony was going to be as such that, uh, for Deschutes County proper, we have a pretty well funded percentage that goes to DMO, um, promotion already. If we did one more percent and if it was a million dollars, and I think it's more than that. Seven hundred thousand would still go to marketing and which is. Not the right alignment for us. So, so I was going to definitely support the future. You know, future concept there and which our letter does. But they didn't call me. Uh, any other discussion on that?
I'll just keep, I'll keep an eye on where, where it lands if they. It, she kind of left it out that potentially they'd listen to more testimony, so if they do, I'll make sure it's pinged to you guys as well.
Yeah, we'll keep an eye on it. Okay.
Okay, um, next step is just, it's just a flag. It's page thirteen, behavioral health, health services, HB twenty twenty four. And has a hearing, a public hearing on the twenty fifth and I believe. Holly or someone from her team is planning on submitting written testimony for that, so. Just wanted to flag that the commissioners have taken a, a priority one support position on that. Holly, do you have anything else to add to that?
No, not at this time.
And then last up for the report, we are going to road department. It's page twenty. Oh wait, did we already, um, so it's SB nine seven four. The, uh, CDD reviewed this bill as well as a priority three watch, so we didn't see it come up under CDD as the priority three. And then Chris reviewed it as a two opposed, so I'll turn it over to Chris.
Yeah, and then similarly what was discussed earlier and Doug alluded to this as well, um, nine seventy four did include. A shot clock provision, uh, for surveyors to approve Platts. Or such that Platts would be approved if, uh, after a hundred and twenty days, they weren't, they weren't rejected. Um, Deschutes County is very familiar with. Bad survey work and how catastrophic that can be, uh, decades after the fact. Um, with, uh, a variety of examples around here. Um, so we were very much opposed to that provision. Now we've been told late breaking. Um, that, uh, the next round of amendments will, uh, remove that, that shot clock provision and, and that takes our concerns off the table. So, uh, priority three watch, um, as recommended by CDD would, would probably be our, our take as well here now.
I support that also. As it evolves. Commissioner Derek.
Sounds fine. Thank you, Chris.
Commissioner Chang.
Okay, great. And then lastly, I'm going to turn it over to Eric. Um, he has a draft living with fire letter to reveal.
Thank you, Jen. Uh, good morning, commissioners. At a recent commissioner meeting. Uh, Jody Barham and Jen Fenton gave an update on Oregon living with fire. At that meeting, the board asked, uh, staff to draft a letter to the federal delegation. Uh, expressing concerns about, um, federal freezes and the impact on, um, wildfire mitigation. So late yesterday, a draft letter was emailed to the commissioners. And I'm happy to, to discuss it today, or if you want to come back Friday, um, whatever the board would like.
Audio. I haven't reviewed the content of that. I did see it come in and I just, uh, yeah, I did, so I didn't prepare for this meeting for that topic. Uh, but has any other commissioner been able to get that far?
Um, you. The, the thing I would like to ask for, uh. In, in this letter is a little bit more specificity of what funds are frozen. Um, I believe that some of these funds, uh, were part of the. Inflation Reduction Act. Um, and, and so providing that additional specificity, you know, these are inflation reduction act funds. Uh. You know, if you even have a program name underneath that, uh, to. To, to provide more clarity and, and more specificity so that, uh, members of, uh. Uh, you know, uh, you know, our, our, members of our congressional delegation can kind of can bird dog this effectively and. You know, track down specific line items that are blocked up. Uh, and ask about those. I, I think that would be helpful. So if we could circle back with. Um, Oregon living with fire, Deschutes Collaborative and others and, and, and get that. Uh, very specific information, um, to add to this letter. I, I think that would be a, a benefit.
Thank you. Yep, we can do that.
Okay. Yeah, let's, so let's just leave it there for now, but that's good, uh. And, and we're all in that spot, you know, what, what's been approved from last fiscal year or this, you know, the federal, uh, uh, fiscal years? And what's, what is really available out there?
Yeah, that'd be the, but the difference for all the county money that we're talking about is that we have not been specifically told that. Our money was, our money that was, um, committed to us earlier has been frozen and is not available.
Yeah.
Well, when I was at the water meeting, uh, what was it, Wednesday night? Um, the people there speaking said that they really felt like their water funding from the feds. Were not, was not going to be impacted, so they were quite confident. That federal government was still going to come through for water projects. So I know we're not talking about. Water here, but I'm just saying, not all federal funding will be, um. Stopped, but, uh, let's say a lot of it should have been and calling it the Inflation Reduction Act. Actually only contributed to more of the inflation that we've been dealing with the last so many years that we're still seeing. So, yeah, don't forget, it's always the opposite.
Yeah, well, well, I worked pretty hard about a month ago to ensure that. Uh, those pots of funding for canal piping projects were not going to be impacted, so, um. I'm glad that, uh, people feel confident, uh, that those funds are going to be there. Uh, but it, uh, it's not for lack of advocacy, um, that, that, um. It was, it was because of advocacy that we are in that position on water resource funding.
Well, I'll believe it when we see it. Because the, that's always the important thing. You know, they can say the check's in the mail, but if you don't ever get your mail with that check in it, yeah, you can forget it. So, thank you so much.
And this is, this is the world we live in right now, so, uh, anything else for this meeting? Okay, so seeing that as I say, uh.
Sure.
Yes, please.
Hey, uh, just, just one quick update. Um, one of our bills, which is Senate Bill seventy five, which is our ADU fixed bill. Just give you, uh, this, this was the one that, you know, we had a potential conflict between the two definitions of wildfire urban interface and the, and then the wildfire maps. And so, um, as a result of the expected changes in, in Senate Bill eighty three, which will be the, the repeal of the wildfire maps, we needed to modify that. That, uh, proposed bill, Senate Bill seventy five, and so I've been. That uh proposed bill, Senate Bill seventy five, and so I've been working with staff. We have an amendment that um. That is being worked on with uh Senator Golden. Um, it, we have not seen the uh posting yet. For a work session and a hearing on that amendment, but stay tuned. Uh, Senator Golden told me yesterday that he expects to post that hearing by the end of the day. So for any of you wondering about Senate Bill seventy five, it it looks like it will move, and that's important because. The statute we passed in ADUs a couple of years ago referred to the wildfire maps. As an integral requirement for being able to uh locate an ADU out in in rural areas. So without this change, it might also throw some uncertainty into the program. So. We're going to um address that in an amendment. I expect to see a hearing posted. Uh, by the end of the day, and I'll keep you posted on that.
Thank you very much. So a couple of notes, uh, Senator Lintecum, she did text me at seven forty s asking if I saw her in the call. So I just feel bad if uh if people are joining us and I'm not watching the list here. So uh, we can, you know, just check for that next time.
Yeah, there was, it took a minute to get her elevated to the panelist. I was texting back and forth with uh Angie and Brendan.
And I wasn't like going to back it up and down the list either, because we had twenty something people. And, you know, it could have been on the top or the bottom of the list at the wrong time. So I just acknowledge.
Reagan was already talking when she, when she finally got elevated, so. Yeah.
And then uh next Friday I will be in the Capitol. I'll be uh. Uh, biannual update from the State Interoperability Executive Council. Uh, I'm the chairperson, so I'll be in front of the. Information Management and Technology Joint Committee uh one o'clock next Friday. So I'll figure out either. I'll be on this call and then drive, or I'll get over there in the morning, be on the call and then be in the building. So. Uh, and it's a spring break week, as I say, there's lots of people coming and going. I don't know how much activity will be in the Capitol. Doug, can you give us a feel for that? Is there a lot of? Activity next week or just kind of a down week, or what's the big picture there?
Uh, yes, the the next, I think the next three to four weeks are going to be very busy. Uh, the committees are. Racing to try to get hearings done and and work sessions, and so I I think it will be kind of crazy. I see Reagan has his hand up and he'll probably have. Good insight into this.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, Doug, but that that will be one of the Fridays where Ways and Means doesn't meet. Um, because they're doing the road show, uh, if that's correct, I think in in my memory. Um, so the Capitol itself will be incredibly empty, um, except for the folks that are staffing or on that joint IT committee, unfortunately.
Yeah, if you want to see something exciting, come see me.
So I'm, I missed the specific date because they've now posted all the Ways and Means hearings. So which date is that, Commissioner?
Uh, just next Friday, every two o'clock.
Twenty eighth, yeah, there's a road show in Astoria, so you're right. Reagan's right, there will probably be very little going on in the Capitol that day.
Because Ways and Means, people who aren't on Ways and Means, legislators who aren't on Ways and Means and their staff typically go home. Thursday night, work from home on Fridays. The only folks who come in are typically the staff and the members on Ways and Means. If Ways and Means is meeting, but since they're meeting remotely, I'll be working from home on Friday, and that'll go for almost everybody else. Leadership offices will probably be open, but not always.
Yep, good, okay. So it'll be quiet in the building. See, that's good. I'm glad I asked. Thank you.
Yep, thanks, thanks, Ray.
It's my LGAC meeting on Friday. I'm waiting to hear back from Jessica. She's actually going to handle it because a couple of people. Um, weren't going to be available, and I did talk to Doug already, and he's, you know, I've been there on Fridays, and it usually is, like as Reagan said. Um, pretty empty, so I may be going over on Wednesday because I've got to promote that. Terabon sanitation legislation ask.
Thank you. I see a note from Holly Harris saying she did testify at House Bill two zero five six on Tuesday. And in uh plans on testifying on the impacts grant for April third. Thank you very much for that. Anything else for this meeting? Well, uh, didn't have a lot of snow last night, but there's still a lot of snow on the ground in southern Deschutes County. I think we got the water where year we've been hoping for for many years. Uh, we'll see how fast it warms up in the next six weeks, though. That's kind of the next thing we need to look for.
I think WikiUp is at like ninety four percent, which is really phenomenal. So now, um, there's just one reservoir that's uh really.
I'm sure it's gonna, yeah, it'll it'll top off here because as soon as it warms up, in fact, next few days it might do that. I remember going out there about ten years ago with my son, and we got to that top wall, and it was just lapping off the top. And then I thought, maybe that was the last time we were ever going to see that, but now it's going to be here again, it looks like.
Yeah, no, they, this, the entire state really looked awesome um at the meeting, so. Um, but definitely there's just one reservoir that does tummelo, but it actually gets fed later. So, yes. And um, yeah, and I think it, uh, my granddaughter's going skiing on the mountain today, and I think it's windy up at Hootu, so. Let's hope she stays on her skis.
Commissioner Chang.
Key thing to watch is is how much snow there is to keep WikiUp full late in the spring. And into the summer, so we'll, we'll, we'll see. Um, and it will take, it'll take more than one good year uh to replenish our groundwater, uh, which is. As we know, been declining for a couple of decades.
Well, on that note, I think we're all set with this meeting. Thanks for joining us, everyone. Have a great day.